I'd like to call to order the Washington Township Planning Commission meeting for February 13th, 2025. With everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, oh, we'll start with roll call Dana.
Mr. Sacco, Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Jasky.
Here.
Ms. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Chaplin.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
I'd like to welcome Ms. Hall as a new member of the, I know it's further down on the agenda, but we appreciate you here.
Good, yes, welcome.
Welcome, welcome. Welcome aboard. Um, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the, approval of the agenda.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minutes from the January 9th, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, Mr. Mr. Bernjurno was our secretary and as you, his term has expired and obviously we have Ms. Hall here now. Um, so we will be in need of a new secretary. So up tonight is a proposed election of the Office of Secretary. If we have any recommendations from, of that.
Well, I did it before and if you'd like, in order to get this thing going, I'll, I'll volunteer to do it again. If you don't, somebody else wants it, that's fine.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Unanimously.
Yeah, congratulations.
Or do I have to entertain other, uh, am I okay to proceed like that way?
Yes.
I don't need to wait for a second nomination.
Darn, I didn't get to run against him.
All right, sorry. Um, correspondence. Uh, first I want to thank Ben Bernjurno, first dedicated service as a team of, a team member of the Planning Commission. He was a valuable member. Um, we wish him his best, uh, wish him our best in his future.
Yeah.
Um, and obviously, uh, he'll be missed. Um, again, welcome Ms. Hall. Um, it's good to have you aboard. Um, public comment on non-agenda related items. If anybody is here tonight that would like to talk about anything that is not on tonight's agenda, um, now would be the time to do that. Come on up to the podium, sir. If you wouldn't mind, please state your name and address for the record.
We had a board meeting, annual board meeting yesterday, and one of the complaints were on construction trucks driving through the subdivision.
Excuse me, sir, would you mind just picking the mic up a little?
Yes, I'm having trouble hearing you, sorry.
Thank you.
More better?
Oh, yes, yes.
So we had our board meeting, annual board meeting, and there were comments about construction vehicles coming through the subdivision. Um, our assumption is there are Veridian vehicles turning too early through the sub. And the question was, is there anything that the township can do to help prevent that?
Is, which, which sub?
Willow Ridge.
Willow Ridge. Um, is that private roads or are they?
No, they're county roads, but what construction, where are they headed?
Around our subdivision, right, and through the sub, trying to figure out how to get out after they get in.
Where are they intending to go?
I can only assume Veridian. I don't know that for a fact. We didn't have them before that.
Did you happen to notice the name on the truck?
It was a complaint by the constituents at the meeting.
Yeah.
Don't the, the trucks have a right to drive on the roads?
They do.
They're county roads.
They are county roads and they do.
Yeah.
But was it the plan for the Veridian subdivision, construction vehicles to drive through Willow Ridge? Was that the plan?
We don't know what.
No.
I didn't think so.
So is, are they connected?
No, it's next street over.
They're actually missing the turn and then they're.
If you're driving westbound on 26.
I got you.
Yeah. I don't know if it's their GPS that tells them to drive through, but they are.
I don't.
The best, the best we can do is communicate it to the building department and have them.
Reach out to.
Reach out and say.
Builders.
Be aware.
Yeah.
Any kind of signage or.
Yeah.
Anything, any signage would have to go through the county road.
Well, that was one of the questions, could a sign be put up?
No construction traffic.
In the front of the vehicle, something of that nature.
You'd have to talk to the Department of Roads is my understanding on that. Um.
Would the HOA put that up?
Not in the county right of way.
Well, my question, this is a planning commission, what was your plan? You had to know that that was going to happen.
Well, we really don't, we can't plan on people missing their turn. Um.
Well, what's your, well, let me take a half a step further then because you've got Willow Ridge North coming in and you can almost be guaranteed the same thing is going to happen. So what's the plan for that?
If they have their own separate entrances, then there wouldn't be a plan. Uh, if they, if you're, if, if your sub connected to that, the planning department or planning commission has, has in the past offered construction entrances, things of that nature.
What's the plan then?
Where you wouldn't, but this isn't a situation where they're cutting through Willow Ridge to get to Veridian or to whatever.
It's a misturn is what it is.
It is a misturn and there's, I mean, we can't plan for that.
Well, okay, so you got the next one coming up, Willow Ridge North.
Yeah, they do have a construction access off of 27.
We can, you know, all we can do at that point is if it's brought to the attention of the planning commission when Willow Ridge North comes in is to make the recommendation for the developer.
So it's a consent judgment. Um, they're in engineering right now and they have, um, one phase that received preliminary condo approval during an amendment to a consent judgment. With that, they have to construct a construction only and fire access to 27. So none of those, none of the construction traffic can go through Willow Ridge or Willow Ridge Farms. They have to, they have to enter off of 27 and that we can regulate because it is in the consent judgment. It's an exhibit in the consent judgment and a requirement of that amendment.
So then, so then how do you prevent someone from making a wrong turn?
That's the question. We, we don't want these big trucks and we've brought it up before.
You know, if you put pressure on the developer, you know, to what, make a, make each, each contractor aware.
What, if they could tell us the name on the truck, we could mention it to them when they came into the building department. But I think after one time, I would hope that they wouldn't make that same.
Right.
It's probably part of the human element.
Yeah.
Like when you recall that learning, you'd like to think.
I'm sure these truck drivers do not want to make that mistake more than once. Uh, turning around those trucks in a subdivision is not their ideal way of doing things.
Well, they're running over the corners and people on corners are smashing rocks and.
Of course.
Stuff around them. It's all happening.
Yeah.
And you know it's a big truck because you can see the double, double tires, you know?
Dana, don't we, didn't we, I don't know, I don't know how many meetings ago, but we're informed that we have some sort of a, um, officer that handles weights and measures and so forth with trucks that we may be able to ask to contact or, or I don't know how this is done.
I think Dana's got it spot on is the building department superintendent could reach out to the developer and say, try to make a conscious effort to reach out to your builders so they notify their, notify their crews that they shouldn't be traversing the other, I, but you can't, you can't stop people from making a wrong turn. I, I mean, if, if, uh, your GPS tells you to turn left, uh, after you missed your street, the, the natural recourse is you need to turn around. So.
So you're planning for failure?
What do you do when, what do you do when you pass the street? You turn in the next driveway and you flip.
I'm not driving a big truck.
I get you.
This is something that was created by the township, putting subdivisions in, right?
I mean, you could call Google.
And that's fine.
Get Google, right?
But if it's creating a problem, the problem was created when the subdivision was approved. This is a planning commission. What was your plan to prevent that?
The plan was that.
And again.
The plan was that we didn't plan on people turning, missing their turn.
You had to know what was going to happen.
Nothing we would do.
What would be your suggestion?
I don't have one.
That's the point.
I'm asking, that's why you guys are the planning commission. That's why I'm here. The question was brought to my attention at the HOA meeting and I'm presenting it to you. Current problem and future problem when Willow Ridge North comes in. I, you know, they're going to cut through the sub.
Yeah, so we.
Actually, there's a sign on, Dana, hang in one second. There's a sign on 27 mile.
Sir, we're trying to hear what she has to say, if you don't mind.
And, and I appreciate the concerns that you have. We did address the Willow Ridge North. We have your comments and your concerns that we can pass along to the building department and do what we can here. Um, uh, there's really not much.
There's not much more.
We can do as a planning commission, but we can definitely reach out and whoever's coming in here for building permits, make sure that it's communicated to be conscientious of the, you know, the location in which you're turning into.
It would help a lot, sir, if you could get the name on the side of the truck. It would make it a lot more pointed.
If a truck is passing through the subdivision at the speed limit of 25 miles an hour, that's about 30 feet per second. I don't know about you, three seconds is 100 yards. I can't get my phone and camera out that quick.
No.
I'm not asking you to do that.
Well, you just did.
Bottom line, it was a wrong turn.
I didn't ask you to film it, nor did I ask you anything else. I said, take it on the side of the door.
We're going to move on from public comment.
So to, to Dana's point though.
Again, sir.
27 mile.
Wait, sir, I've already commented on this. We've responded to it. There is nothing the commission is going to do with your request.
I'll pass that on.
I apologize. That's just the way it is. So your public comment is over.
There's a sign on 27 mile.
Your three minutes is up, sir.
Oh, I didn't know I had three minutes. Shit, if you'd have said something, I'd have, but there's a sign on 27 mile, no commercial vehicles through.
We are moving on to another agenda item, sir. You've already got your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to new business, the Sheena's Fuel Station on, uh, public hearing, section 4.25 Fueling Service Stations on 66998 Van Dyke. Parcel number 240411126013. Could ask the petitioner to. So I think we can turn this, uh, over to our review agencies, or actually, we'll, we'll, let's hear you out from your, for your presentation first, right?
Okay. Um, so if it's all right, I know there's two special land uses. I just want to talk about the project as a whole for a little bit and a lot of the justifications for a special land use are very similar because they're similar style uses, but, um, so, good evening. My name is Mitchell Harvey. I'm with Stonefield Engineering. Uh, for the record, my address is 555 Old Woodward and that's in Birmingham, Michigan. With me tonight is Ryan Sheena, uh, with the applicant and we are proposing to reutilize the existing, or I guess the former, uh, Rite Aid site located at the southeast corner of 31 and Van Dyke for a fuel center and drive-through restaurant. So essentially what we're trying to do is reuse as much of the site and the building, uh, as possible and add improvements where it makes sense and where we can. So the existing 11,000 square foot building is going to remain. It'll be divided into two tenants. Uh, with the fuel service center would be the westernmost tenant and then over on the east side, you would have the, the, the drive-through restaurant component. The gas pump canopy will look, be located to the west of the building, um, within the existing parking lot. Uh, the building facade itself is going to be largely the same it is today, but we'll be adding some more glazing glass along the drive-through restaurant component and then some other minor facade upgrades. Um, we're maintaining the existing access pattern to the site. There is a full movement driveway onto Van Dyke as well as, uh, 31 mile. We're going to be maintaining that. The Van Dyke access point, uh, is actually shared with our neighbors to the south through a reciprocal easement agreement. We're going to keep that in place, so no changes there. Uh, from a site parking standpoint, the site is self-parked. We have, uh, 69 spaces where 69 is required by code. And then, um, we're going to be reusing the existing drive-through that, uh, has nine drive-through stacking spaces where eight are required by code. So we're hitting those two items there. Um, specifically to the pavement will be milling and overlaying majority of it and then restriping and, and kind of refreshing the, uh, the parking lot and some of those more worn down areas. Um, so we'll be also the repairing some flags, sidewalk along, um, Van Dyke and 31, kind of as needed. And extending a sidewalk into our site in the northeast corner there. Uh, that's a site feature that currently doesn't exist with the former Rite Aid. So we'll be bringing that sidewalk in to our site, um, to provide a little bit enhanced pedestrian walkability. Um, to the east, we're removing the existing septic field. We'll be connecting to municipal sewer to the south. Uh, and then the restaurant is going to be, uh, retrofitted with an underground grease tank. So you won't see it as you're driving by, but we're still capturing those, those oils and fats before they're entering the system. Um, landscaping wise, we'll be maintaining some of the more mature trees on site and then also adding in an additional 11 trees around the site to hit majority of the landscaping standards. Um, there's a facade or building landscape, uh, requirement that we're not able to hit just because of the nature of a, um, existing site, existing building. But we will have to seek a variance for that, that piece. Um, so with that being said, we feel that the site, um, meets the special land use criteria. It's harmonious with the surrounding automotive related uses. Uh, you have Autozone and another auto, automotive, uh, heart supplier to the west. And really minimal impact from a traffic standpoint, these uses draw on a lot of the existing traffic on the roadway. People generally go to gas stations and rest, and drive through restaurants on their way home from work, on the way to soccer practice as they're grocery shopping. So it's not adding a destination trip. It's not, people aren't leaving their house to go to get gas and then driving home. So it, it's really a, a complimentary use to the existing 31. You know, the uses are consistent with the goals of the master plan, um, providing the, the gas service use to the surrounding area. And then, um, we don't see it creating any negative impact at all in the surrounding developments. We actually think it'll be a positive as a, no longer a vacant parcel. It'll be a active use. Um, and then also ultimately we think that, um, it provides a great opportunity for an adaptive reuse where you're not scraping the whole site, throwing everything away and then restarting. All those new materials you got to bring in, it gives you a good opportunity to kind of recycle, reuse and, uh, lessen the impact on the overall, um, you know, environmental materials and all that kind of stuff. Um, so on to the review letter. We reviewed the review letters. Um, we really think that we can work through them all. Um, minus potentially one, um, with staff with no marginal changes to the plans whatsoever. The one comment that I did want to bring up was number six on the Giffords Webster review letter. It mentions a sidewalk connection to Van Dyke. Um, if you're familiar with the site, there's actually a fairly significant grade change as you come down from Van Dyke to the site. So initially when we were putting it together, our sidewalk plan for the site, we wanted to get a sidewalk onto the site. Um, but we weren't able to make one that's ADA compliance so someone with a wheelchair could get to the front of our building. So that's why we chose that location to the northeast. I know it's not ideal if you're coming in off Van Dyke, but you would be able to still utilize the sidewalk along Van Dyke and then along 31 to access the site, um, via sidewalk. So that, that, that was kind of how we arrived at that. So I just would like to make a request if a sidewalk connection requirement, um, could be excluded from any motion, um, for this project. I just, I don't think we could make one that would be safe for, for someone with ADA needs. But besides that, ultimately we can work through all the comments. I think they're, uh, great comments, uh, good improvements to the site, but we, we're happy to work through those with staff. Um, and ultimately we're really excited about this project. We think it'll be a great opportunity to fill a commercial vacancy and I'm happy to answer any questions, um, you may have. Thank you.
Um, I'll turn it over to our reviewers first. Um, Kayla, if you wouldn't mind. Agency we use to review the, review the drawings.
Thanks. Uh, so it sounds like you took a look at the review letter and recognized you'll have to go for the variance for the building landscaping. Um, our other comments were all very minor. Um, it could be changed on the site plans and even included in a motion. Um, so that we don't have any other concerns besides that variance.
Okay. And, um, obviously Mike, uh, Mike Kozak, if you wouldn't mind going through some of your concerns. Obviously he brought up the one with the connection to Van Dyke, which would be a concern of mine as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think his reasoning is, is quite valid. Um, there is a significant grade drop off. Um, the parking lot itself is quite steep there. It would be really tough to kind of zigzag pedestrian access to make that work without some, some sort of ramp. Obviously, you know, the ordinance intends to have pedestrian connections into a site. They are meeting that. It's just, it's on the far extreme northeast corner. There are site constraints that kind of are really hard to avoid. So I, I wouldn't totally disagree with that. Um, the only other comment, uh, most of ours are, you know. The only other comment, most of ours are, you know, procedural things that are required in the ordinance that I think the applicant could easily handle with a simple resubmission for a final check and not have to come back to this group if that's their choice. Mitch did mention the sidewalk along 31 and Van Dyke. Emergency, I would say, repairs were made to that this year, patching of cracks and...
They're rough.
Yeah. So, I mean, they are going to have equipment out there to mill the parking lot. I would strongly suggest that pathway be milled and then a new layer of overlay be...
Isn't... And correct me if wrong, but like K blocks and that one next door, that has a full-size path, correct?
To the south?
Yeah.
They installed a pathway along their property that it disconnects to, yes.
During this process, wouldn't it be appropriate to... I mean, due to the condition of that path, to continue that at the ordinance-required eight foot?
Oh, I think it is. It's pretty darn close to eight feet, right?
The current one, then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. It is.
All right, all right.
Yeah, it's just it's been there for a really long time. This Rite Aid was constructed in 90, late 90s, I want to say, early 2000s. There are some trees in the parking lot that seem to... Their root systems have helped to move that path a little bit.
Yeah, they did.
So, you know, just looking for... They're going to invest all this time and money into this site. They want to make sure it's safe for pedestrians.
I think that's the reason.
So, the sidewalk is not practical. It's not doable, is what you're saying.
So, we get two sidewalk issues. The first is my letter indicated we'd love to see a connection from Van Dyke. The grade is a really good point. I would agree that you're getting your connection on 31. You're satisfying the ordinance. So, I would say ignore my comment. I rarely tell you that. The second one is that they are suggesting that they'll make additional repairs. I would strongly suggest that that pathway be completely milled. Maybe the base coat of it stays. You put a new layer over the top and you have a new surface the rest of the...
I agree with that.
And then, like I said, the rest of my comments are very simple and procedural. We do have a comment about the stormwater storage system. I know you got a letter from the county indicating that they believe the outlet of that... Where does it outlet to?
It goes to the north, I believe.
Into, onto 31?
Yeah.
Okay. So, they've indicated that falls under their jurisdiction. Obviously, through engineering process, they're going to need to get a sign off from the county that says, hey, you don't have to do anything to that system. We would recommend it be cleaned and proven that it's been cleaned, so it's functioning correctly with a new order. But that's going to fall under the county's jurisdiction as they're kind of flexing their muscle on that.
That'll all be part of engineering review.
And I know Rich Emmerino had a few copies in there or comments in there about water and sewer leads. Again, those are things that can be worked out in engineering to make sure there's...
For the multi...
Exactly. Nothing that would stop any kind of correct land use approval.
If I can add just one thing. I know that we're talking about the site, you know, as a general. There are two separate public hearings that have to be decided on, you know, independent of each other. So, I just want to, you know, so... Just so that... Just reiterating that.
Absolutely, yeah. I have that in my notes. So, I mean, at this time, I've heard review comments. Take it to the commission. If there's any comments from the commission.
Seems like a pretty clean project.
Yeah, honestly, reading through everything and looking at the plan, it's a good reuse of the property. What, the closest gas station to the south is, what, Kroger? And the next closest to the north is a couple of them right on the edge of... Or in Romeo or on the edge of Romeo. All they're in Romeo, I believe. So, I mean, it's... I think it's a good use of the property. And beyond that, I...
I do have a question. A majority of the use is going to be for the fuel service center? So, you have, you know, items in there from, you know, sodas to just like a party store, I guess, for the lack of...
Correct.
A grocery store, maybe would be a better way to say it.
Yep. Convenience-style store.
Okay. Beer and wine? Okay. That's not our jurisdiction, right?
Liquor licensing is with the state of Michigan.
So...
There was an existing liquor license at the property already, is that right?
Oh, that's right.
Is that part of the sale? Is that a transferable?
It's transferable, but it's not through the owner. The state's a bit over the Rite Aid and bankrupt, so you can buy it under the state.
Okay. I did have a question on the gas pumps. I'm looking at the original drawings, and it shows a much larger canopy. I'm looking at the A6 elevation, and it looks like you've significantly decreased the size of the pump station there.
Yeah.
On the original drawing, it looks like it's about 75 by 40. And on the A6 drawing, it looks like it's about 24 by 74 and shows a single row of pumps rather than a double.
It's going to be the double row as depicted on the site plan.
Okay, so the A6 is not correct, then?
I think that's just to show like what one row would look like.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to ask about that and find out.
Yeah.
The other comment I had, I was looking at the... This is C3 site plan. And the traffic lanes behind on the south side of the building and going around to the east, you've got the angle-in parking next to the drive-through and the restaurant over there. And it looks like from the rendering, you have two-way traffic behind the building there. Is that, you know, is that something that we would want in that area? Or should that all be a single way? All the drive-through traffic's heading that way. There's really no way to access the angle-in parking coming from the 31-mile road entrance.
Is that what the arrows we were talking about?
That was one of the comments on our review, and it sounds like the applicant is willing to address that, but...
So, is that going to be one way through there?
So, the south side is not going to be one way because that is shared from our... The neighbors to the south. They want to be able to come up from their easternmost drive aisle and take a left or go straight. At the drive-through window location, that'll all be one way going north. Just to get to those angled spaces. But there'll be a do-not-enter as you're coming in off of 31. So, if you're coming in off of 31, you will take a right and kind of work your way through the site that way in that counterclockwise fashion.
Okay.
So, really, the only traffic going west there would be coming from either behind the Plaza to the south, which is very rare. That's probably the only people that work there, right? Or that's it?
That's pretty...
I mean, if someone... Yeah, I don't know, if somebody else...
Or somebody going the wrong way.
Right, there you go.
Not following the rules, so...
So, yeah, so coming out of the Plaza to the south, they, you know, they might want to put a no-right-turn sign there.
They'll probably have directional signs. I'm sure they'll have a sign package with whatever... Whatever they go forward with. I know that it was brought up in here several times in the review comments. The sign package will be separate and reviewed separately, not as part of this commission's approval or... Further discussion.
Is the restaurant going to handle the delicious food from Sheena's Deli?
Our plan is to make a Sheena flight. So, we have to have Sheena there. We're going to pick the top item that's solid grocery-wise at Sheena's and bring them all there too. It'll be a smaller Sheena, is the plan.
The store, Will?
Store.
Oh, fantastic.
The one on Van Dyke, Old Van Dyke?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Because we've owned that for almost 30 years.
Wow. We've been going there for 20, so...
Yeah, right. Fantastic, thank you. Any further discussion, or we can open up or make a motion to open the public hearing?
One more thing I wanted to ask about the... I'm looking at the rendering for the restaurant and the floor plan for the convenience mark. I see the kitchen prep area in the back, about 1,000 square feet. Is that where all the food is going to be prepared back there and then transferred to the restaurant area, or...
It's going to be two different...
Yes, they can't hear you. Anyone watch.
So, when you pull in, when you get into the store to the right, there's 1,048. That's going to be a single standalone restaurant for the gas station. The drive-through of 1,844 is going to be like a Dunkin' Donuts, something like that, independent of the store.
Okay. Will that have its own kitchen facilities in that area also?
Own kitchen facilities, yes.
That'd be a separate entity.
Just want to make sure. I didn't see them noted there, so I want to make sure. Thank you.
I think we can entertain a motion to open the public hearing on Section 4.25 Fuel Station Service Stations.
Who?
All right. I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing for Article 4.0 use standards, we're just doing 4.25 fueling service stations at this time is now open. If anybody from the public would like to speak on that, please proceed to the podium. Seeing none.
Motion to close public hearing?
That'd be great. Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed for the fuel service stations portion of the special land use request. So, at this time, we could entertain a motion from the commission...
Open.
To open?
Go open the public hearing for a second?
Well, do we... I think we have to vote on the public...
You have to vote and then you go to the next one.
On the special land use. And then, we'll talk about the drive-throughs.
Got it.
Right?
Well, this one is specific to the gas station, the fuel service station.
This is about the fuel station.
So, you would make a motion for that request? And then, the next one, you go through the same process for the drive-through?
Absolutely. So, I think at this time, it would be the appropriate time to make a motion regarding the fuel station portion or fuel station special land use.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, remind the commission that your motion needs to contain findings and conclusions with respect to each of the standards.
Of the special land use considerations.
So, it's an up or down motion. You've got to have some fact and some conclusions behind it.
Each one?
Each one.
Each one.
Which is why you generally don't make motions or make decisions on such items until one meeting after the public hearing. So, you have time to digest all the information that's presented and review it and come up with a motion.
So, do we need to suspend our rules if we want to make a decision at this meeting?
There's actually... Yeah, you don't have to suspend. If you want to make a decision, you can make the decision on it. Just list your findings as you're going... As you're reading through the standards, you would just add a comment with regards to submission and the criteria.
So, I'll make the motion to approve the site plan and special land use requests submitted under Section 4.25 Fueling Service Stations at the Sheena Fuel Center located at 6698 Van Dyke Parcel 240411126013. And it's based on the eight special land use standards. Proposed use shall be of the location, size, and character will be in harmony of the surrounding neighborhood and applicable zoning district. Obviously, it is with the fuel station near auto parts stores in a general business area and reuse of a building that exists as a good use for that property. The proposed use shall be of the nature that vehicular and pedestrian traffic is no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved, taking into consideration vehicle turning movements, relation to routes of travel proximity, relationship, and intersections adequate adequacy and site distances, location, and access to off-street parking provisions of pedestrian traffic with particular attention to minimizing pedestrian-vehicle conflicts. I think the site accommodates that. It is no more dangerous than the previous use of that property. And it does, I think, it's, again, a good use for the property. The proposed use shall be, number three, shall be designed to its... As to its location, size, intensity, layout, periods of operation, and any such proposed use to eliminate possible nuisance emitting therefrom, noxious... It might be noxious to the occupants of other nearby uses permitted, weathered by reason, dust, fumes, vibration. Today's day and age, the gas stations obviously go under... Undergo intense inspections by the state of Michigan with regard to tanks and fumes and things of the like. And I don't believe that this causes anything. And they will... I know we talked about the dark sky, and they'll comply with the dark sky requirements of the township ordinance. Item four, proposed use shall be such, the proposed location and height of the building or structure, nature of the height, wall, fences, landscaping, and not interfere with discourage appropriate development and use of the adjacent properties or unreasonable affect their value. This is a reuse of an existing site. The building is no larger than it was before. It's not an issue. Item five, the proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses in regards to prevailing shopping habits, conveniences, access, prospective patrons, continuity of development, and need for particular services in the specific areas of township. With the growing community we're in, having another source of a market is welcomed. Obviously, losing the Rite Aid to the community was a quick stop for many, and this will replace that. And obviously, having Sheena is a little closer to Washington Township residents, I think, is welcomed. Item six, proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed location. Obviously, the convenience speaks for itself. Again, brings that store into a location that is convenient for Washington Township public and puts the gas station closer and more convenient to some of the residential neighborhoods. The proposed use is so designated, located, planned, and operated, so the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. Again, reiterate the Eagle requirements and the state of Michigan requirements for gas stations, that will not be an issue in pedestrian traffic. And item one, it's in harmony with the area. Item eight, proposed use shall not cause substantial industry injury to the value of other properties in the vicinity in which it's located and not detrimental to existing or other permitted land uses in the zoning district. Actually, I would argue this use will promote growth in the area based on the fact that we don't have a vacant building there at this... Moving forward to fill a vacancy in this community, a large vacancy. 11,000 square foot building is not an easy fill, and this is a good use for it. So, there with...
And also adding the contingent upon addressing planner and engineer's comments.
And contingent on working with our planning and engineering department on... With their comments. I make that recommendation for approval.
Support.
Can I get a roll call, Dana?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Jasky?
Yes.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
And the motion passes Part 1.
Part 1.
So, then, that brings us to Part 2. At this time, unless somebody has further comments about drive-through from the commission, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Public hearing is now open for the Article 4.0 Use Standard 4.23 Drive-Thru Facilities. If anybody from the public would like to speak to that, please proceed to the podium. Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
If it's helpful, page nine of our review has criteria and findings that may apply to the special land use. You may want to bring extra things in or take some of it out, but at least a starting point to help with the motion.
Page nine?
Yes.
And if I may?
Yes.
Your motion was exceptionally detailed, but you do not need to read the entire standard. You can pick out just a few key terms.
Okay.
But we appreciate you reading the whole standard.
Yeah.
You did a great job.
All right.
From my standpoint, more...
So, you could just go with item one, approved?
No, not just item one, but you can say something simple as...
The characteristics.
Location, character, and size in harmony.
Got it.
Thank you. I shaved us a half hour.
Sorry about that.
More is better.
It's been a little long-winded.
Rather have more than less.
So, item nine, standards for drive-through facilities shall be permitted... So item nine, standards for drive-through facilities shall be permitted, she, I'm sorry, your comment, would you like to go over it or is that just something you suggested? Item nine?
No, no, it just, just to help you on page nine, we have the special land use criteria, like, applied to the site development so that you don't have to recall everything from your head that was discussed. You're welcome to do that, but just, just to make your life a little easier.
I did have one question. What are the hours of operation for both of these that you're considering?
5:00 AM to midnight.
5:00 AM to midnight?
Well, it's an existing drive-through now. Not at all. It was for pharmaceuticals, but.
You never know. You might want some chicken at 3:00 AM.
Who is that? I can't find it. I do not page nine.
I'm kidding.
I know Bob, I know Bob. Our chair Bob keeps pushing.
What number?
I know.
Chairman Bob was.
Chair.
It's, it's, it's all subliminal. It slowly works its way into the zeitgeist.
I think it's this one. Correct? Special land use standards?
Yeah, so this, these would be findings that you can use.
That's kind of what I worked through on the last one. Excellent. All right, well, then I'll entertain a motion for special land use consideration.
I'll make a motion for special land use consideration.
Second.
For the. For the drive-through. I just want it to be more specific. More is better than less, right?
The motion would have to include.
Are you making the motion to approve, Dan?
Okay. I'll finish. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to consider the special land use for the drive-through.
Second.
It has to address.
Are you approving?
You're gonna address the eight.
You have to go through the same.
To approve, right?
Right, the same.
You have to go through the.
Oh, okay. I withdraw my motion.
All right. I will.
I'm sorry.
All right, I will.
So we're tired. You don't get a restaurant.
I will.
I got there, right?
I will make the mo, the motion to approve the site plan, or actually, can I move to approve the site plan and special land use on this one because?
Yeah, that's, that's what both of us.
Okay, because now we're tying them together, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'd like to make the motion to approve the site plan and special land use requests submitted under sections, or under section 4.23 drive-throughs for Sheena's Fuel Center located at 66998 Van Dyke Parcel 240411126013. The decision's based on the eight special land use standards. It's harmonious to the neighboring, neighboring business, businesses. The, the drive-through facility, in-site layout existing from the former Rite Aid will not generate any excess traffic to the neighbor, neighboring community. I'm sorry, I'm. I like my. I'm on the wrong one. Item three, the require, oh, you're, wait, I'm using your considerations now instead of mine. My fault. Let me back up. I apologize. I lost my page.
Well, this is getting complicated.
The eight standards. I just gotta go with the eight standards. Proposed nature of the vehicular traffic is no more hazardous. It's, as, as stated in the previous motion, this, this is no more hazardous than the previous use and is, is good for the community. The proposed use and design, intensity, layout, periods of operation to eliminate any nuisance. Again, we talked about that with regard to state of Michigan involvement and the lights meeting our dark sky ordinance. Proposed use, so the proposed, proposed location and height of the structures, it's an existing structure. There is no more, the intensity of the use is no more than what was already there. The proposed use shall be relate to harmoniously with the physical, economic aspects of adjacent uses of land. Filling a vacancy in the community is a good thing. The proposed use is necessary for public convenience. Adding Sheena's to the neighborhood is a good thing. Adding a gas station where one is not relatively close is, is good for the community as well. Proposed use is so designated, located, planned, and operated so the public health, safety, and welfare is protected. With, with all the comments from our planning and engineering and, and the comments of the commission, I think all that will be preserved. The proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of the, of the property owners around and it's, obviously, a vacant building damages them far more than the install of this, this into our community. And for those, for those reasons, I would move to approve the site plan and special land use. And include our, our comments from the com, our planner and engineering department. And I know we had mentioned also the, I would like to see it remilled, the sidewalk along, the sidewalk along 31 and, and is that, is that in your comments as well?
It's strongly suggested in my letter, but I would think it's appropriate that.
I think it should be part of the motion.
If, if you want to make sure that it happens, it should be part of the motion.
I, I want to make that part of the motion.
I'll second that.
For what portion of sidewalk? The entire?
I.
All the existing.
That's what we like to hear.
The existing sidewalk.
I just want to, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I second it.
Can we get a roll call, Dana?
Yes, you can. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Jasky?
Yes.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Good luck.
You did good.
There you go. I thought I'd let you do it.
I appreciate that.
Look forward to whatever non-specific.
Sorry, I didn't mean to complicate you.
Sorry, I lost my.
Really? What the hell?
Our review letters do match up to the criteria, so those eight points give you the findings if you want them, not the actual criteria.
Oh, I know. I was, I went to, I saw your findings and I'm like, wait a minute, this is not what I'm looking for. I apologize.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure I didn't throw you.
It seemed like it was very organized.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Have a good evening.
Okay, that takes us to, that was A and B. So we can move on to zoning ordinance text amendments, public hearing, personal care services, licensed tattoos, massage establishments, definition, natural resource protection, defined wetland terms, and off-street parking. So I will, I'm gonna hand this over to our, to our planning planner. That's correct, right? You're our planner, so. Yeah, to discuss those, if you don't mind.
Great. Thank you, Chair. So the, these ordinances have been in front of the planning commission now. I think this is the third time for tattoo, tattoo and massage establishments. The purpose of amending these ordinances was to take those uses out of the adult business category and regulate them consistently with other personal care services. So what we've done is we've added a definition for personal care services. We've included, you know, permanent makeup facilities, massage therapy, tattoo, body art, body piercing establishments, so that they can be regulated again with life uses. A lot of times, we see these combined anyway with, you know, massage and hairstylists or tattoo and, and earring piercings. So this, this is just more logical and fits into your commercial district. So changes are the definition and then under personal care services in your use tables, we've just removed that subsection that says such as beauty shops and tanning salons so that we're not unintentionally limiting those uses as long as they comply with the definition. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
That's everything we discussed prior. Any, any further discussion from the commission?
Well, tattoo parlors were always regarded as, like you, like you were saying, adult use.
Yes.
So what, what's caused that to be moved out? It's just, you know, not to fall under that category anymore.
Yeah, so there's a lot of additional criteria with adult businesses that just aren't really logical for, for how we see tattoo businesses used today. So things like having to locate it, you know, so far from a school where sexually oriented businesses or, you guys call them adult businesses here, I apologize, but, um, so it, it just isn't consistent with the way that these are used, which is really, you know, someone driving up to that use, making an appointment, scheduling like they would to, to go and get their haircut, and then also the business taking place within more of an office setting, clean lines, and things like that.
Okay, so before, you know, tattoo parlors, again, were just regarded as like an adult use. I'm, I'm just kind of curious, what put them in that category?
Oh, sorry, what put them in the category of adult use?
Yeah.
I could not answer that for you. It's decades, decades old. I, sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Same thing in township, you know, they just changed that.
They changed it to.
Yeah, where, where they took it out of that.
And I think the reason, yeah.
There's permanent makeup, there's permanent, I mean, that applies to that as well.
Okay.
That's considered.
It's a cultural, yeah.
More accepted.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Just like any other ordinance that we go through and it's a fluid situation. Life changes and we make changes in our ordinance to accommodate, accommodate different things and allow different things into different areas, so.
There's a lot of requirements through the state and the county because there, you know, they have, it's considered medical wastes with needles and there's, there's a huge, you know, amount of, you know, and the way that this, it's as a license, you know, obviously, you have to be.
Are they regulated by the Macomb County Health Department?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
That's good. I mean, I don't have a problem. I was just kind of curious.
Your next business venture?
Oh, yeah. No more businesses. I'm done.
Any other questions regarding that portion? We will likely open a public hearing on all at one time, so I guess we can, let's hold off and we'll go to the second one, which would be amending section 513E, natural resource protection. Would you like to address that?
Yep. So again, we, we've had a lot of discussion on these ordinances. To catch up, our, our new commissioner, we had some issues with the language of the ordinance being unclear and so applicants were coming in and kind of arguing about the way that the standards were applied or there was even some question among reviewers. So what we've done is we've established definitions for the items that are regulated in the ordinance. So we, we created a definition of drain and underneath it, natural water courses, county drains, irrigation ditches. We've defined our lakes, our lake shorelines, ponds, streams, wetlands, so that there's really no question. And the way that these will be regulated in Washington Township is that if one of those features exists on your site, if it's a regulated wetland, a regulated county drain, or a natural lake, pond, or stream, you have to leave it as open space. However, if it's not one of those items, but it's, say, an irrigation ditch or a wetland that's not regulated, you have to either mitigate it, so remove it from the site, or you have to provide that buffer around it. There's no in-between here. So we're, we're just clarifying that. It's the way we've been enforcing it already, but we want to make sure that our, our ordinance is locked up and tight.
No, I, we did. We discussed that at length. Obviously, it's, I like the way you put it together. It looks, it looks great. It's everything we discussed. Any other discussion from the commission? We hit that pretty good over the last few meetings. And then the next thing we would go on to would be the off-street parking and I think this was just a cleanup, right? For the most part, getting everything into one spot.
Yes. Yep, for the most part, that's true. The only difference here is that for the village district parking reductions, we added criteria for the planning commission to consider, again, to, to defend you guys in the decisions you're making so you don't feel like you're, you know, subject to that questioning from the applicant. You still have the ability to grant up to 25% reduction, but again, you have that criteria that you look at and consider.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's, that's a, that's a big deal.
Thank you.
You know.
We're not just throwing it out there.
Yes.
I like that. That's great.
Are there any questions on that? I'm happy to answer them and I, I know, Lisa, again, you're, you're coming into this, but if you have any questions, feel free to.
Any further, any just further discussion from the commission? If not, the appropriate time to open the public hearing.
So moved?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need a motion, don't we?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open regarding the zoning ordinance text amendments. Anybody from the public that would like to speak regarding the zoning ordinance text amendments, please proceed to the podium.
Motion to close public hearing.
There you go.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. I would like to make the motion to recommend approval for the amendment of the Clinton Township zoning ordinance being ordinance 130.
Clinton Township, Washington.
Washington Township zoning ordinance.
That's gonna cost you a dollar.
Being 100, number 138 of Washington Township ordinances to provide regulation and permitting licensed tattoos and massage establishments within the LCGC and VI zoning districts and defining this use with a definition for personal care services, amending section 5.13.1E. Natural resource protection, amended, and also amending section 513E, natural resource protection to provide clarity regarding the type of wetlands required, required to be preserved and requiring a, to provide a buffer, adding definitions for lake shoreline, water course, natural water course, county drain, drain, pond, lake, streams, creeks, irrigation ditch, drain, and also amending section 512 off-street parking and loading requirements to move all parking provisions into this section and updating table 512C off-street parking requirement table to include personal care services, multi-tenant commercial buildings, drive-through, waiting space count, yard clippings, compost facilities, and temporary construction trailer sale trailers, and repealing any ordinances and, or resolutions in conflict therewith and forward this to the township board for final consideration.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Jasky?
Yes.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that, guys.
Yes, absolutely.
And shout out to Mike here too, for his help with the wetland ordinance.
Of course. Figured he might have a hand.
Stay in your lane.
We can move on to old business, item nine. Washington Creek request, has, has requested to postpone to the March 13th, 2025 meeting. I'll make the motion to postpone making recommendation on the formal planned unit development application submitted for Washington Creek, Creek and further place the application on the March 13th, 2025 meeting.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we can move on to the implementation plan annual review. I will turn that over to Kayla once again.
Awesome. So I don't usually assign homework. This is one of those rare cases. And I do have to ask, who did the homework? Do we all have our, our priorities identified? Because it'll change how I do this next exercise. John, I know you have yours.
I didn't do anything. And nobody can prove otherwise.
Okay, I saw a few hands. All right. So just, just as a reminder, what we're doing is going through the master plan implementation program and identifying for this year what the priorities are that the planning commission would like to work on with staff. We are hoping to identify three to five achievable tasks from the master plan. These will become the work plan for us for 2025 and we'll report out on those items at the end of the year and ongoing as applicable. So when things come forward, you know, we can comment on how it, how it applies to those priorities. A reminder, the master plan vision statement reads, "As Washington Township continues to grow, new development will occur in a planned manner that respects the history, natural environment, and rural character of the community and preserves agricultural uses even as it acknowledges the need for progress. Washington Township's future will be built on a strong diverse economy, housing opportunities that serve an array of needs, high quality of life, and well-managed growth." We recognize that different bodies in the township serve different roles, so we're really hoping to have this discussion around what the planning commission and planning staff can achieve to support the township's vision. So during the course of this discussion, please stay engaged and keep dialogue respectful. I ask that you do leave openings for others to speak up and then it's okay to talk about patterns you've observed, but just a reminder that, you know, we're on the public record, so please don't talk about individual projects, applicants, or addresses. So for those that did participate in this, can I just ask, was it helpful to review the master plan implementation program? Is it, you know, did you? Did, you know, did you learn anything? Was it all familiar?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the way you have it set up here, I felt was very organized and helped us look at each one of those goals and go through that whole process of the objective and action and who's involved.
Okay. And this master plan is not, this was before Spalding Decker's time, so I didn't create this for you, you adopted it previously, but I'm glad you liked the plan you adopted.
I like the way it's organized, though, is what I'm saying.
Whoever put this together, wow.
Yeah, and that, that's what we'll keep going forward to track progress towards those actions, so that's great. Commissioner Chaplin, did you have?
All good things. Did you want me to start?
Did, did you have something you wanted to say to start?
No, no, I, I, well, maybe.
All right, so again, I saw a few hands. What I planned to do was go around to each of the members and just have you state first the three to five priorities that you selected from that implementation plan. And I was just gonna go through and do votes and then have us come back and, and have some discussion and build consensus to find the collective groups, three to five. Does that sound okay? Are there, you know, do we need to avoid that because not everybody has them?
I have a few things, I just, I, I know you said three to five items and obviously I started going through and I'm like, there's so many that need to be done and I know you wanted to prioritize them, but a lot of what I was concerned with is a lot of the, what MAP had put out with regard to ADUs and duplexes being pushed into our residential areas and actually adding density to our area where we really, our infrastructure's not completely ready for all that. And in, and honestly, Washington Township has made it very clear resident, the residents of Washington Township, that they're trying to get away from density. And a lot of the, what MAP had put out was that they were, in the state of Michigan, and what they were trying to push through with those laws was to push that into our community and not give us a choice. So I, I just like what we have and in our ordinances and, and I just don't want that taken away from us. I don't want that right taken away from us as a community. So I, I guess that's one of the ones, one of the biggest things that I'm worried about. I don't know how that ties in, I know the goal three, the housing, a lot of those items are brought up in that.
Yeah, so I, I would encourage for this discussion, sticking to those implementation items that were identified and adopted in the master plan, and particularly be thinking about the authority that the planning commission has, right? Which is to make recommendations on ordinances to, to direct us as we're pursuing those things. I would say when it comes to that political advocacy and the statements that the township may make, that, that's really gonna fall on the board level. So I wouldn't encourage us to, to have that as a planning commission priority. You know, let's, let's look at those actions that we really have influence over as this group.
Okay.
Good point, though.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so last, Commissioner Hall, I won't start with you because that feels like a lot of pressure.
Just because it's your first day doesn't mean you have to.
Can we, can we start here and go around?
Fine.
Yeah, what do, what do you have?
Okay, regarding the, there's one of three items.
Yep, three to five. Just go ahead and list them, don't tell me your reasoning right now, I'm just...
Okay, very good then. My, my biggest thing since I've been on as commissions, been about parks, you know, like to see more parks throughout the, the community. I love to see connecting streets or connecting subdivisions. When I, when I grew up, I mean, we used to be able to, I was a 12 mile low Mac, and we used to be able to ride our bikes to Eastland, all on side streets, you know, so I'd like to see something like that. And then maintain the open spaces, try to preserve the, this, I moved out here because of the trees and the forests, and obviously the farms, you know? The farms are going away, nothing you can do about that, but I think with these subdivisions, we can do something, right? With the open spaces, this commission passed at the grand entrances, I think we're doing a lot to try to, you know, preserve the beauty of Washington Township because it is such a unique community. So, that's it.
I was waiting for DDA.
And then, the last comment I'd like to make, if I'd be so kind, or if you would allow me, if you'd be so kind.
I tried to make that for you.
You know?
I made that for you last week.
No, I forgot about that. And I thought about it, I said a DDA meeting this week, and I forgot about it. Anyways, so the DDA needs to start over in the village district. And what the DDA does is it captures tax dollars and those tax dollars are able to be funded into the, the district, downtown development authority, for improvements. And this will give the, the village district a big boost as to what it needs to, you know, enhance or to try to implement what, what we're planning. So the DDA is important. One more comment, should I go in front of the board to promote this? Would that be a recommendation? You know, for me to try to push for the DDA?
Not really certain. Is that, pushing for a DDA, I mean, the township board has to make that call, so it might be something, I don't know if the commission makes that recommendation.
So John serves as your liaison, I think if it, if it comes up to the board, then he'd be the, the person to communicate that.
Yeah, the first question will be, what's your plan? I think we probably need a plan for, you know, there's, there's a lot more discussion to be had, I think, before we, we go, we want a DDA. Like, I want a fire truck too. So I think, yeah, I think there's some more, I think there's some more discussion to be put in. You know, not to, not to get too far off on the DDA, DDA thing, but I mean, there's, you know, there's definitely some pros, but there's also some cons to...
What would the cons be, out of curiosity?
Can, can we, can we table this?
Yeah. Commission discussion item, and it may be that's something we add as a commission discussion item to...
I would like that, next meeting?
Yeah, and then I could prepare more information, but I'd like to, to vote on these items from your implementation plan first and then...
We won't hijack your, your hard work.
No, no, this is all great, I just, I want to make sure that we have the information prepared to be able to answer those questions.
Those are all the comments I have, thank you.
So, I know Bob, Bob's not here, obviously, tonight, but he did, he did email in five things, I don't know if everybody had seen them. Do you want to add that in as part of the record, or is that something, he's not here, so he's out of luck?
No, no, we asked him to, to send them. Do you want to read them in, sure?
I can, yeah, that's fine. He, he said he's, sorry he's not here, obviously, he did turn in five priority items. One, the planning commission establishing a standing annual review date for the implementation plan every September in order to review the progress.
It'd be January.
What?
It'll be January?
We're gonna say January, sorry, Bob.
And, and, yeah, that's not anything that's coming from the implementation plan, so we'll just file that as a side note.
Okay. Township, Township will work to make itself attractive to businesses' potential to provide professional employment opportunities and plan for, provide land for their facilities. Work, work with established and new chamber of commerce specific to Washington Township or establish a connection to existing chambers, chamber that can meet new, the needs of Washington Township, including its neighboring communities of Romeo, Bruce, and Bruce. Parks and Rec could be a very effective vehicle for this objective if it isn't already. Item four, concentrate commercial industrial development in primary non-residential corridors along Van Dyke and M53, M53 and along 26 Mile Road. The Powell Road corridor of 30, 30 Mile Road to 32 Mile should also be included, nothing but opportunity exists there. And item five, A and B, he's got A, protect township's historical assets, including, you told him five items, so he had to break in five, so he could put six, so it's okay, that's Bob.
I'm lower.
So, we love you, Bob. Including historical buildings, districts, and scenic areas, strongly consider incentives and standards for presentation of historical buildings, whether state or federal sites. Moreover, designate these objectives as desired quality of life for all residents and visitors to enjoy, and also to consider establishing a DDA for the village area. And also include the Van Dyke corridor included with the village ends up, also include the Van Dyke corridor included from where the village ends up to the Van Dyke Romeo, or I'm sorry, to the Washington Romeo border. Possibly include any of the east-west mile roads where appropriate.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to the group, I think Commissioner Chaplin had mentioned that the board did choose to rejoin the Chamber of Commerce, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's McComb Chamber.
Great, so that's one of our actions that had been addressed.
Yeah, we had talked about that.
We're not with McComb, though, are we?
No, just, just the one so far.
We're, because we need to...
We're with two.
Yeah, we're with two, but they've, they have new names now, so...
Well, they keep changing them, who knows?
Well, there is a McComb County.
Yeah.
Chamber, I know we belong to that.
Are we with the McComb County too? Or, we're just north of McComb, right?
Well, it was Sterling, and now it's, I don't know what, I apologize, I'm not quite sure what their new names are, but we have two that we belong to that I'm aware of.
That's good. It's McComb then.
Okay.
Sterling changed to McComb.
Okay.
Sterling, the Sterling Chamber changed to McComb?
I think so.
Okay.
Fair enough.
My big thing, I, I kind of, I guess I misunderstood, I went item by item on the economic, or on the housing one, and I had, I was really most concerned with those items. So in the density, I do want to preserve our agritourism, our, the unique things in the community, the, you know, the golf courses, the agricultural, the, it's, it's things, the open space, and, and like I said, I'm all about less density.
Thanks. All right. Commissioner Jacobson?
Probably I have one that kind of hits several goals here, but I think it's important for a number of different reasons that we look at our commercial and our, our industrial areas. Coming under economic development and access to services, that we actually make sure that they would be desirable for, for those type of services and industries to come into our area. Also, of course, open space has been something that, that I'm very concerned about, and I just want to make sure that we have some good definitions. Also, to know what's considered open space and what isn't, and that way we can achieve some of these maybe higher densities for the housing by clustering them, and then we'll have more open space for those people to, to enjoy that. The other thing was to make sure we, on housing, to take a look at that. And I know, I've forgotten now that we just received a planning magazine that had something to do with northeast Michigan, where they, they have a, is it called an atlas?
The zoning atlas?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how that's going to impact us, I know that's something, they're trying a tool that might make it easier for us to determine what's available, what land's available, and where it's available, so a tool like that. And with the open space, I forgot to mention, to have parks and recreation areas and pathways that connect. I know we bought a few when I was on the, on the board, but we need to have them throughout our community. That way, when we do have the more dense residential, we have areas of recreation for them and, and open space, so it kind of all blends together for me sometimes.
Yeah.
There it is, that's kind of it.
That's great, thank you.
I have to apologize, I have nothing.
That is okay.
I was, I was off from the meeting last time and subsequently, some other things were going on. I didn't even know we had this to do, so I should be okay now, coming back.
Yeah, no worries.
You want something, then I'll have to get with somebody. That's what I should...
No, it's okay, we'll have some discussion after we, we go through the votes, so.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? I, when I went through these, there's, there's a few terms that I had questions on, and this isn't the time to ask, but I guess at some point in time, I just, there was just some terms I wasn't sure what it meant, and I would like to ask or find out whenever somebody can tell me that would be appropriate that I could do.
Yeah, of course, and you can always email us as well.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, but we, you know, if there are terms that...
Sometimes I forget about them.
But if there are terms that the commissioners, other commissioners may not know, we can bring it up on public record too, just to have that, yeah, thank you.
Me?
It's you.
I didn't have any comments. The first one that I put down, under economic development, was the C1, the capital improvement plan. Creating that five-year capital improvement plan, we're coming into budget now and, and looking at, you know, some of the allocations that the township is looking at moving forward. And whether we go with a DDA or something like that, I think that having that comprehensive capital improvement plan really gives us the guardrails of where we need to go and, and, you know, what type of, of money we're looking at. And I always kind of, you know, it's like, I like to have a plan before you, before you implement a plan. So that was the first one that I had, and, you know, in the similar vein, the, on the next page, the A1, the advocacy item. Coordinating with McComb County Economic Development to, to look at selling Washington Township as a good location for industrial development. I think we've got a lot of push for that, we've got a lot of land that's available for it right now, that the township is looking at investing some significant money into, and we really need to figure out a way to bring people in to take advantage of that opportunity. We have a limited amount of industrial space in this township, and one of the things that I've hated to see over the course of the years is when we get some good industrial property, where it gets a, what I would consider a, a substandard use, rather than, than a good tax-paying industrial development, where we, where we get something that, that is more of a commercial, taking up industrial rather than, you know, just a, a strict industrial or, or IRT use. I'd also looked at, under advocacy, again, under access to services. Again, it's, it's all about, you know, reaching out and marketing the township, you know, finding the people that want to come here and do business. So I guess, you know, if I'm staying in my lane, I'm looking at more from, in these, obviously, kind of more from a board perspective than a PC perspective, but it all, you know, it's all intertwined, so.
Which, sorry, which item was that?
A1 under two, access to services.
Okay.
And then, let's see, I'm gonna skip over housing because Barry's covered housing.
If I, if I can make one comment, because I know that, Commissioner Jasky?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that you've always expressed, you know, your desire to help with commercial, you know, businesses and getting, you've met with prior supervisors and trustees to try to advocate to bring, you know, other businesses here. So to kind of piggyback to what you're saying, you know, just to offer that as, you know...
Sure, absolutely.
What you've, you've always felt, you know?
We had the other supervisor, we actually met with Jay Baldwin to try to, to get a restaurant of his caliber in town, and at the point in time that we almost landed that, he built the other one over on 22 because it worked for him near his 18-mile facility. But they did come out, they were interested, and after that, basically, it just went nowhere. But I'd be willing to do it again.
Yep, I just wanted to mention that.
Oh, thank you.
Because we're talking about that.
I had just said that to him.
Did you?
Yeah.
When I was on board, he was, he was out there beating the bushes.
Yeah. We have plenty of potential, the problem is, and, and you only have a problem if you can't solve it. So I guess you throw something on the table like, what do you do when you don't have facility for somebody to take over? Today, with the interest rates and so forth, even back when we tried to do this, the problem was, there were no used buildings, now we have a few, but, so nobody wants, or nobody at the time, wanted to invest millions of dollars in, you know, building a building and then putting a, whatever they do there inside of it. And that's probably one of the reasons why that piece of land, maybe I'm wrong, but that piece of land that we've had inquiry on a number of times by, I think, what's his name? Heating and cooling guy?
Yeah.
You know, but nothing's happened. I, I, I cannot believe that we were involved... You know, but nothing's happened. I, I, I cannot believe that we were involved 10 years ago in the, in the restaurant, the iron, 10 years.
Brown Iron.
Yeah. But anyway, thank you. I'll, yeah, I'd be more than willing to do something. Brown Iron.
Yes, yeah, 10 years.
Has it been that long?
Yeah.
10 years. Yeah.
And then lastly, I would just add, one of the things that Bob had talked about too, was our historical areas and the unique, unique places around the township.
Thank you.
You know, preserving and, and, you know, making people aware of, of the history of the township, I think is valuable. There's a, you know, there's a rich history in Washington. It used to be, you know, the brief history lesson, before I go off too deep a tangent, but Washington Township was the most populous township in Macomb County at one point. Yeah, if you go way back before the railroads, this is where everybody lived. The industry was out here. There was, there was lumber out here. You know, there was, there was a lot going on and agriculture was growing. It was, you know, beautiful fertile land. What kind of took that away was the railroads. You know, when railroads get positioned, business and commerce follow the railroad. So, but there's a lot of history here that I would like to see preserved. I think we're, we're working towards that. And I think the public's becoming more aware of it. So those items are, you know, what I've got generally.
How about the schoolhouse over at mound and 31? That's a shame. I've seen that thing deteriorate. Too bad.
I know, I know the supervisor, I know Sam's been trying to acquire that and, and work with the property owner to see what we can do for preserving and relocating. And he's been working on that for, for years.
If I do something sooner, that's going to be a lost cause.
There are things going on in the background right now. So.
It's really gone bad in the last year.
I actually approached Gary Kirsch way back when, probably in 2007 or something, about trying to preserve that.
Yeah, it's too bad. It really.
I drive by it every day.
That roof, that roof is deteriorating on the backside.
When we moved in here 25 years ago, that was what it was.
You're within a year or two of that thing.
You guys were collapsing.
It's sad.
Commissioner Hall, did you, did you want to throw in any votes?
I really didn't get a chance to look at it because I just, just got into this. So, no problem.
Totally understandable.
But I agree with everybody, what everybody else is saying.
All right. So I have my tallies here. Give me just a sec. You guys were a little bit all over the board, which is maybe not surprising. Big implementation plan and diverse group. So it looks like we have seven items that got more than one vote. So if we can narrow that down a little bit and think about what actions Planning Commission and Planning Staff would actually be able to take towards those, that, that can help us lead toward those priorities. But the first, sorry, first one was really looking at the pathways and trails. That came up a few times in, in connecting pathways and trails as a priority. The second one was the PUD and open space preservation. And I think that goes hand in hand with the clustering. There was another action item on that that, that you had brought up that I think would be worked on together. The third one was parks planning. Fourth was looking at commercial and industrial business. And there were two sides to that. One is targeting those businesses, but also looking to ensure your zoning ordinance accommodates the types of businesses that you want to see. So again, those go in hand in hand. And then we had historic preservation. And I think I would, I would challenge this group a little bit to think about what your influence would be over that, if, if that was a priority that you select. And then finally, coordinating with Macomb County on marketing Washington Township.
The historic side, from a Planning Commission point, we really don't have like a historic district. So from a planning perspective, we, we are limited and very, very, we really don't have a lot to say on that unless there was some kind of guideline set with a historic district. So am I, I'm correct in that, correct?
Yeah. Well, there are things that can be done. And I know, you know, there, I know the city of Detroit uses a non-contiguous historic district. So if we wanted to, and there were advantages to having particular buildings in a historic district, we could name an individual plot as a historic district. And they don't necessarily have to connect to each other. So if we can find a reason to do that and a benefit for it, it's something that I've seen done before. So.
Any other thoughts on these items?
I mean, they're all, you go through the implementation, but these are all good things to do. It's hard, it's hard to just say, I want to do these. And I think.
And this is year one. So, so as a reminder, it's not to say these other things won't get done.
And I think too, as things pop up, as, as, you know, as things come before us, the, you know, your focus changes. You know, something that's, that's not on our radar now in six months, we may have a very good reason to jump into something else. So overall, yeah, I like the, the areas of interest. But we just have to figure out which ones, you know, what, what can we do with each one? You know, what's the, what's the purview of the PC?
You know, it's my opinion, when, when you have a community as Washington Township, as unique as it is, I, I've always modeled, had my vision similar to like Rose Point. And some of the parks they've had or have are just beautiful. They're incredible. And it adds so much to the community. And, you know, it's always been my vision to make Washington Township just not a place to live, but rather a community. You know, where, where, you know, like, you go to even like Birmingham or Rochester, there's a, like a vibe there, you know? It's vibrant. And, and that's always been my vision here. How to implement that, I don't know. But I believe I have a nice parks. I mean, what's, what's the park over off of 29 Mile Road, the soccer?
Gilcher.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I drive by it every day. I should know. You like to see a little bit more, more there than just a field.
Well, there are some plans for that.
Yes.
There's, there are some pavilions planned and there's some upgrades that Parks and Recreation is working on.
That's huge.
I, I think part of the problem is, is that it's not being communicated very well. I have a couple of friends of mine who are in real estate and we were talking about the availability and also the, what is the scope of what we're doing here? The impression is, because of the development that we were involved in with all these subs and everything going in, and very little other development, in my opinion, and theirs, what's unique about us? What was unique? It was the farmlands. It's like what Abbey still has. But if you notice, that seems to be going, like Big Red now is more commercial. They're not a farm anymore. And the impression is, if you come out to Washington Township, which is still very valuable, you want to be sort of semi in the rural aspect. That's why we came out here, from Sterling Heights. That was insane asylum in there, by Lakeside.
Yeah.
But I'm seeing, and I'm, I'm being very objective, but I live here, we are leaning more toward the subdivisions than trying maybe to develop other things that, you know, would work and attract people to the, back to what Washington really was all about, very much like what, what Abbey does.
Well, Dana, didn't we?
And maybe I'm wrong. I mean, I'm just telling you what perception the friends of mine had.
You know, if I may.
Yeah.
Let me try to implement a, or start a program where to promote farm ownership that.
I'm pointing at Mr. Chaplin. Are you talking about, or even Abbey? Are you talking about the, the P, PDR?
Wasn't, where, where the, there was incentives for someone to keep a farm?
Oh, the P.
PDR.
Yeah, a long time ago, we talked about that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it was called property.
Purchase of Development Rights.
Okay.
PDR. State was a program.
But no one took it, right? There's.
There is a program.
I don't know if Abbey wants to speak to that.
The opportunity is still there. People can still do that.
The opportunity is there. We do have, oh goodness, was it 400 acres we have in northern Macomb County?
Yeah.
Most of it is in Richmond Township. Bruce has at least one, the Falker Farm. And then I think there's one in Armida Township.
But nothing in Washington.
The prob, well, if you look into the program, especially around the Grand Rapids area, some of these townships have actually, they're collecting a tax where they're taking that money and helping by development of rights. And they, they look at that very positively, more positively than any other area. If, if you're contributing as a community, then you get so many points. I, it's a lot of points. You get, you get subtracted points when you have watered sewer in your area. You get more points when you are contiguous. And there's a lot of acreage there. That's what we have in Richmond Township, where they're contiguous, which is, which is an advantage. And, and larger parcels are looked upon more positively. But probably the biggest disadvantage is the areas, there's Ann Arbor area, somewhere down in there, I've forgotten exactly where. There's also another, some more communities that are actually collect dollars, some type of a taxation that the community has voted in to help preserve that.
It's almost like what Mr. Thomas is talking about, only in a different area.
And I would encourage you, if you, if you want a little more information, Kendakook and Abbey just came to the last board meeting. They did a presentation on exactly this for the PDR that explains what they try and do. So if you watch the last board meeting, there's a lot of good information in there. I, I'd wanted them to come out because I think it's a valuable program. It doesn't get a whole lot of, a whole lot of advertising. And, you know, but it's, it's like anything else. When you're trying to convince somebody to, to, you know, get into this program and, and sell property rights, you know, there's always the other side of it, which is I could just sell my land for a whole lot of money. There's a lot of developers out there that are competing with a, a government-funded, you know, organization who's got more money in their pocket. You know, so it, you know, it's, it's worthwhile, but it's, you know, it's a little bit of an uphill sell sometimes. They've been doing great work. You know, they just, and I don't remember where it was, they just signed a really nice parcel recently. So it's, it's putting a lot of land into a, a permanent agricultural trust, if you will. Wrong word, but, you know, it, it maintains it so that the only purpose it can be used for going forward is agriculture.
In our area, as a farmer that wants to get into this program, in order to really get looked at seriously and to get points, you're going to have to take, because you're only going to get so much for your land. You're not going to get what Washington Township is getting for land. So you're only going to get so much. And then you're going to turn around and you're going to take some of what the value of your land and you're going to put it towards the purchase of your land by the state as an easement.
That's how that works?
I don't know exactly if I'm explaining that correctly, but. That's what you have to do in order to, in order to get more points for the state to take a serious look at your piece of property. And the Macomb County Economic Department, they have done an awesome job, helping us along, training us, getting information to us and filling out the forms for these farms. They just, I, I can't say enough about them. And they've also put several thousand dollars, I think they put 5,000 into the program every year. When we, when we do get land that goes in, they, they've really been very, very supportive, which is really nice to see.
So it, it's a matter of economics. You know, you have a developer that comes along, yes, offers the farmer $70,000 an acre and versus them trying to preserve their farm and the state offering them, you know, what, was it 5,000 an acre? I don't know. I'm just guessing.
It's, it's more than that, but it's not a lot more than that. Yes. There is a cap and I'm, I apologize that I don't know that cap rate off the top of my head right now.
You've given a, a lot of information. Thank you. But anyways.
So I do, I do have a question because we've kind of talked about open space and the agriculture and agritourism separately. When you are talking about those items, do you see them as one and one? Because some of our approaches for open space might be different than the approaches we would take for farmland preservation and agritourism development.
No, I think they're two different items. I think open, I mean, obviously we have open space provisions in our PUDs and whatnot. And it doesn't really pertain to agritourism, but it does, the overall scheme of things is less density, you know? But yeah, I agree. They're two different items. Yeah.
Which, which would you say is the priority to the commission and to the residents of those two?
Open space. I would say the open space. I think both are important. But I, I mean, they are. Obviously, it's, it's, agritourism is kind of what brought most of us out. Not the, not the actual agritourism, but the idea of moving out to a community that has these type of places is why a lot of people moved out here. The open space, implementation of open, open space and, and moving forward and, and development, it's important to me. And it's probably a lot easier to control than agritourism. Agritourism, you, you can't control whether or not Abbey decides to keep operating. But you cannot, you can control the developments with regulation. And I think that's what we're here for.
And I think that's what the community wants, you know, to preserve what you're saying. That, that's why that was the motivation for them moving out here.
Great. Thank you, guys. So based on this discussion, I, I, you know, have an idea, I think, of what those priorities are. We can try to nail them down tonight, or I can come back to our next meeting after talking with Dana with a, a work plan based on those items.
I think that's.
Is that? Okay. Okay.
And you have, you have the list of what was brought up tonight?
If there's anything else you want to contribute to it, by all means, just email us, you know, or anything you want clarification on. I know Abbey said that she had a couple questions on some terms. If you want to.
I have two. You can, you can also call us. You don't, you don't have to type it all out.
I'm curious now. Yeah. Define open space.
Great. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate this. This is really valuable. And every year, we'd, we'd like to revisit this. But again, keeping these things in mind, it helps us to be proactive rather than reactive. A lot of what you do as a Planning Commission is reviewing these developments that come in. But there, you know, there is more there. There, there's looking at these ordinances and, and thinking about the goals of the community, how it aligns with your master plan. So we want to help you get to that point. And these conversations, I think, are really meaningful. So thank you for the work that you put in.
How do you coordinate with the, with the board though? Because some of these actions are board, some of them are Planning Commission, some are combination. How, how do you get that?
I'd be more than happy to help with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And I, I will say too, your, your planning staff is communicating regularly with Sam, the supervisor. And so he's communicating with the board as well. So we try to have that alignment and make sure that we're all right. We're staying in our lanes, but we're also building these bridges so that we can achieve these goals.
Not only do we have John on the board, we also have Dana who works directly and is in direct contact with Sam as one of the employees there. And, and I'm sure she can voice those concerns off the commission. And obviously, at any time, we have the right to show up at one of those public meetings and discuss it with the board as well as.
I think your board would love that. Yeah.
You've got all the numbers of the board members and our email addresses. You can call us anytime.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're always available.
Yeah. I don't, I didn't mean me personally, but I, I held the position that you held.
Anybody that wants to.
And that being said, the, the work plan that we present next will be focused on Planning Commission and planning actions. Not, not to say that the other priorities aren't important and aren't guided by your master plan. But again, you know, recognizing the roles that we can play and the influence we have, what can you do so that you're, you're held accountable to the residents too, when they're coming in and asking you these questions? You can point to the things that you've been able to influence. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We can probably move on to project update with Mike.
I like that. We need a graphic for that. Project update with Mike.
Just flying in from off screen. They can add that in post later. Pretty quiet. It's obviously very cold out. We've been getting a lot of snow. So construction has been kind of quiet. You might have driven by the Romeo-Washington Medical Building there off of Van Dyke. Building construction there continues. Canter Farms off of mound subdivision there. Still, when weather permits, lots of underground utility installation work occurring. Multiple water and sewer projects set for construction here in 2025. Just working on getting easements and permits for all those. And I know the contractor just started mobilizing on site over east of N53 on 26 Mile Road, where the new pedestrian bridge will be installed along with a portion of sidewalk to make that long needed connection across the existing drain there. So that's kind of the biggest exciting thing right now. But besides that, fairly quiet.
What about repaving, I don't know, maybe like mound? It's like a. I mean, that is a.
It's getting really bad.
That is bad.
So that project has been, the portion of Mound Road from 29 Mile Road to 32 is a part of the county and state tip program. So that means it's primarily funded with federal dollars, 80-20, and then the 20% is split between the county and township. The only problem is it's not until the two-years-away tip. So surface scene of that section. And again, very much an affordable option for the township with only paying a small portion to touch three miles, six lane miles. You know, a big change there.
By the time they go through two more years of the beat-down.
Well, that's getting, and that's the concern with all these projects, is they're really trying to make sure that, they try to grab it as early as possible. Obviously, it gets really expensive when you have to rip everything out. You will remember that, you know, the piece south of there was redone last year from 26 up to 28. That was in pretty bad condition as well and very smooth now and they made some minor drainage improvements to help that as well.
Thank you for the bad news.
Sorry.
Thanks for that project.
No, that's good news.
At least it's on the horizon. You know, it's all you can.
Guys, the board has really committed a lot of money to keeping the roads as best as humanly possible.
Yeah, and getting that three-mile stretch paid for. Our part's 10% of it. That's huge.
It's substantial.
Township Board update.
Let's see, we already mentioned the PDR presentation that Ken and Abby had done for us. 26 Mile Bridge was talked about. The CDBG annual allocations were done. All the same players that came in last year came in this year and they were all allocated pretty much the same amount of funds because the county gave us the same amount of funds. So that's going good. At the last board meeting, we did go over the waste hauling contract, the priority waste, and talk about what was happening with that. And the board decided the best course of action was to approve that for a further five years. So we've got our rates locked in. There'll be small annual increases, but we've got a really good deal going forward, locked in for five years now. So that should be a nice thing to have off our plates. Other than that, the fire department is implementing a new records management system. We just got approval for that. So I know Sam would want me to mention the community survey is, if it's not done, it's going to be done in another day or two, so that information will be coming out. I know we've had north of, yeah, at least twice as many people participate as last time it went out. So we should get a good sample of the community for that. And it's budget season, so that's fun.
Item 13, Commission Discussion, Zoning Ordinance Tax Amendments. Continuing the discussion of the V1, the Village District Guidelines, design guidelines. I know Kayla has put together, I'm assuming it was Kayla that put together the everything with regard to the design guidelines we have here.
Yes.
Love you'd like to go over that?
Yeah, so I won't spend too much time on what's drafted here, but just to remind everyone where the conversation left off. We were tasked with bringing the Village District Guidelines into the zoning ordinance with the thought that if you have these design standards, the only way to really make them enforceable is to bring them into zoning. Having them in a standalone document as guidelines, it's very hard to hold people to that standard. So we've done the work of bringing that over. That's the draft that's in front of you. All the red lines obviously show what's been added to your existing ordinance and it's all consistent with your guidelines. We had a few discussions that I think we worked out regarding items like color. We had also looked at height at one point and decided to go back to the original. Sorry, it's about a sec, 40 feet, I believe, allowed in the Village District. But there was a question that came up by the planning commissioners' last meeting about whether they did, in fact, want to bring those design guidelines over or if they wanted to leave them in a standalone document. And so that's the second piece of homework that we gave you all is to really think about that, look at this language and come back to us and give us direction on how you want to proceed.
Yeah, the 40 feet is the, that's by special land use, right? Going to 40 feet?
Yes, we had suggested raising it to three stories by right on corners, but we took that back out after our planning commission discussion.
Basically, 40 feet, you're going to need a special land there. Or over 30, you're going to need a special land.
Correct.
So next course of action with that would be through public hearing?
So what really needs to be decided is whether or not the planning commission really wants to hold applicants to these standards because that dictates how we move forward. You know, we've hashed out a lot of these standards in here. We can continue to revise those if that's what's desired, but at the end of the day, if you don't want to require these design standards, take them out of the ordinance, we'll keep them in the design guidelines and kind of continue business as usual.
Well, we have buildings that have already committed, built with these standards. So I would think you'd want to maintain that, continue, you know, what's been started.
Counselor.
Well, to revisit, I have two very smart women down there that gave me a very different advice on this. I would love to hear you both restate your positions on this because I am having a difficult time reconciling these two very important but contradictory points of view.
Yeah, from, I mean, from, obviously, from a planning standpoint, to put them into the ordinance is one thing, but if we have to defend them, can we?
Architectural requirements, in my opinion, no. Because in order to defend a zoning ordinance provision, you have to tie it to a legitimate governmental interest.
So even if it was in the ordinance, it would be tough to enforce?
It'd be, correct. Which is why they're in the design guideline. It's in a separate document. And your ordinance does say that they shall follow the design guidelines. But were this commission to ever start to make a motion to deny an applicant submission because it was the right color, I would be jumping up and down, screaming and yelling and letting you know.
We've seen it.
You can't do it.
Yeah.
It's one thing to encourage something. It's one thing to put your vision out there and encourage developers to follow it. It's another thing to try and require them to have a certain pitch on a roof or have a certain look to a building.
Well, certain things in there, I think, could be part of the ordinance. The, like I said, the 30-foot rule, those are things that are hard lines and then special land use to go to 40. I mean, those are things that we could have in the ordinance. But the guidelines themselves could be, maybe it would be more acceptable to the planning commission to approve a site if it met the guidelines to allow you to go to 40 feet if you met what guidelines we have. To use that as almost like a leverage to move them in.
That's a question you can have with the developer. You can encourage them.
Encourage.
You can't threaten them. You can't threaten them. You can't hold it over their head, but you can encourage them because you've already got a vision for your village district and it's very clear. You go down there, you take a look at these guidelines, you take a look at what you've been approving. Anybody that listens to these commission meetings will know certainly that this commission is very fond of brick.
We are.
A certain style and a certain look and the walkability. Those are things that come through loud and clear. But mandating an architectural design, colors, slopes of roofs, no, it's not defendable.
And historical is not good enough reason.
Not without a historic district.
We don't have a historic district.
So you made a statement a minute ago. It says the ordinance says they shall follow the design guidelines. Is that the language?
That's in there now, yes.
Okay, so then the design guidelines are incorporated into the ordinance by reference?
By reference, they are.
Okay, so.
And when we did that, we went round and round on it because I wanted the word "may", but I gave in on "shall" to make it more.
Persuasive.
Persuasive, exactly. Persuasive.
Okay.
Because it is important to the commission. It is important to the township.
To the community, it is. And I think that most, and most of the developers that are coming in understand that.
But you still can't make a motion to deny something based on color or based on the fact that they've only got, you know, one window versus two or.
No, you have to hang your hat on the parking, you have to hang your hat on the height, the area, the more concrete issues.
Substantial land use issues that relate directly to public concerns with respect to your walkability and traffic and.
Kayla, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I would say my perspective on this is that I'm not an attorney. I can't give you legal advice and I don't ever want to, you know, contradict Christine. I will say, I have seen these used often, these standards put in ordinances in several communities that have these districts they're trying to achieve. From my perspective, you guys, you know, have gone through the work of defining these areas in your master plan. You have these guidelines that help support. So while, you know, it could be hard to defend, I think there's also, you know, you have some footing to stand on. And I do think I would want to make sure that our intent statements are very clear if we were to do this. Again, it's hard for me to reckon with the fact of having these guidelines and these recommendations if there's no teeth because how do you uphold it over time?
But if there's no, I get what you're saying. Put it in the ordinance, it looks like you have teeth, but you're basically just, they're false teeth. I mean, really, because I'm in enforcement as well and if I write a ticket, I need to be able to stand behind it. And if I can't stand behind it, it is just a guideline. So I guess at that point, what is the harm in just keeping the guideline the way it is? Maybe, is there a harm in that? I guess that would be my question.
Agreed.
I mean, at that point, if it's just a guideline, it's guideline. It's referenced in the ordinance.
No, this is not ordinance yet.
To me, I mean.
If you put it in the ordinance and it gets challenged, then you've got a problem.
So here's the thing, if it gets challenged as a guideline, we still have a problem. Is this, is putting it in the ordinance opening us up to a chance of more lawsuits or less lawsuits?
Does "shall" trip us up?
It may.
Leave that discussion for later. If you put architectural requirements in the ordinance that are not defendable and somebody challenges it, then you've got a problem because then they're going to challenge everything they can in the ordinance. So you've got a bigger issue.
And then you really have to, then you have to attack your own ordinance immediately and really, which.
You're better off leaving it.
We've seen that happen with site ordinances around the country.
Exactly.
So.
Better off what?
Leaving it as a design guideline. In my opinion, I completely get what Kayla is saying because I agree. You want to do something, say it, stand on it, do it. But the design guidelines was a way to get there.
I guess.
To help encourage it, to let developers know this is what you're looking for. You're coming in, please do this, this is our guy.
Well, we can regulate where the buildings go.
Yep.
You can do that. We can regulate that, what the construction materials, right, the 90%.
So long as the regulation of the construction materials deals with strength and durability, not just I choose this over this.
And then the 10% architectural design, we can regulate that.
It also, you know.
But the design itself, you can't.
Yeah, the design.
I mean, that, but this, that works then. I mean, you know, what you're trying to do is encourage a developer to come in and meet this, you know, this guideline.
And we're seeing, we're seeing special land uses come into the district and the guidelines are there and obviously, if it's more attractive to the commission as they're making their decision that they're meeting the intent of our guidelines, it's going to point us in a good direction to begin with. It could be those items that are more harmonious with the district is one of the items might be, you know. So again, we can't say we're approving it because it's green, but.
It's green and white, it's okay.
Oh, that's true, as long as your counselor will defend green.
Such a basic analogy.
I'll defend green and white with no problem.
I want to really quick, Dana, give you a chance to weigh in because this was something I know that's been on your plate and you've wanted to work on.
Yeah, it's been a struggle and that was the whole reason why we started with this, to try to incorporate everything in one place so that we could preserve what the intent was. And I respect, you know, what Christine says. It is hard to reference a separate document outside of the zoning ordinance and, you know, and still be able to achieve the look that, you know, we envisioned within the Village District. But, you know, I mean, that was the whole reason. I mean, that, you know, I kind of started the, rolling the dice on this and hoping that we could at least incorporate. And maybe there are, outside of the architectural requirements, I think there's still things we can incorporate into the ordinance that are redlined that would really help. And maybe that's something we can go through and then decide what we're going to put in that if that's the direction the PC wants to go, what we're putting in that separate document, if it's just the architectural requirements. But there's other things in here that would benefit by cleaning up that ordinance and shifting everything into one place also.
But still preserving what the, what the, what the intent of the Village District.
Preserving the guidelines as the guidelines.
Did I say that right, Counselor?
Thank you, Senator Beautiful.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Well, I don't, obviously, it sounds like we're, this discussion must continue at some point.
So, well, I thought I heard an action item in there and you guys can correct me, but it sounds like we want to separate out so architectural, for architectural requirements or standards, refer to our design guidelines, kind of keep that language. But some of the other things that are maybe more defendable in talking to Christine, like pedestrian access, things like that, pull those actually into the ordinance to make it crystal clear that we're requiring.
Street escape amenities, because that's another thing that we want to make sure that we have that consistency for lighting, the consistency for benches and things because that's not in the ordinance, that's in the guideline and we, for consistency in appearance, I think it's important to have that.
Would it be appropriate to have you work with Christine to see what those items may be that we need to retract?
I would be happy to do that. Okay.
And get those out and move as much into the ordinance as we possibly can that you can defend?
Yeah.
And then the list the things that are not defendable into the guidelines and still refer to them.
Harder to defend, she's harder to defend.
Okay. And I get where she's coming from because I've seen it happen where if your ordinance is not on point, you lose, you don't just lose what you're trying to preserve, you lose the whole argument when you get to court and they get whatever they want. And I mean, you may, you know, you may end up with something way off base. Not, I mean, they could come in with exactly what they wanted to do and you lose the whole thing. So it's not good. So, I mean, there's usually less compromise when it comes to that. So obviously, consent agreements happen and usually, there's a give and take on those as well, but we don't want to lose one altogether.
You want to have to fight a consent judgment over blue?
No.
Well, you'll be the star winner.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion this evening for adjournment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good meeting, people. Thank you.